July 11th, we're calling this meeting to order at 6:14. Thank you so much for your patience. Let's go ahead and go to Fledge of Allegiance. Trustee Withrow, would you like to lead us today? Thank you, trustee Withrow. Let's go ahead and move to roll call. Student trustee Massand.
Here.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes? Absent. Trustee Gonzalez Ewan? Trustee Napolei Valeris?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Here.
Trustee Quinlan?
Here.
Trustee Dalton Polk?
Here.
You have form.
Thank you. Affirmation of the Statement of Cooperation. The Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that codifies our commitment to set the bar for excellence in governance and community college leadership, and to lead by example for our Peralta colleges. The full statement of cooperation is always attached to our agenda, but in summary, we have committed to build trust and seek to understand each other, to be prepared and follow good governance and ethical protocols, and model the behavior we want others to exhibit. We therefore commit to honoring and upholding these commitments in words and in action. Okay, moving to 3.5, report of action taken in closed session. I don't believe we have a vote to report out. Is that correct? VP Quinlan?
Nothing to report.
Great, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move to 3.6, approval of the agenda.
President Polk.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure this is the right way to do, but I wanted to pull something from the consent items.
This would be the time.
So I'd like to pull 4.2, consider approval about a state travel for discussion.
I have an item also.
Okay.
Item 8.2.
That's already on the action. Is there something else you wanted to pull?
No, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Move approval.
Second?
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. So we've pulled 4.2, just for clarification, we pulled 4.2 from the consent and we're moving it to action, correct?
Thank you.
Okay, great. Let's go ahead and trustee with roll call.
Student trustee Massand?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan? Trustee Napolei Valeris?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Dalton Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We will move to approval of the minutes. Motion please.
Sure moved.
Second.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and move to roll call.
Student trustee Massand?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan? Trustee Napolei Valeris?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Dalton Polk?
Here, not here, yes. Here and yes. Okay, let's go ahead and move to associated student government reports if we have anybody with us that wishes to report out. There's anyone in the room or on Zoom? I don't see anybody.
There is nobody that I can see.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to classified senate report. I did get an email from Roberto Gonzalez saying that there was nothing to report out this time. So we can move straight to academic senate report. Is President Goldstein in the room?
Yes, thank you, and he will not refer to himself in the third person going forward.
No problem, thank you.
Thanks for having me. I'm Matthew Goldstein, I'm now the president of the district academic senate, and I just wanted to say the DAS really appreciates being a permanent part of the agenda, and when school starts, I'll probably assume the position at the table over there, but for now, I'm happy working the podium. I hope to be brief tonight, so I just have a few things to share with you. So at the risk of pinning too much hope on the Fall PBIM Summit, that's the the Planning and Budget Integration Model Summit that's set for September, I wanted to reemphasize faculty's interest in seeing the shared governance structure of the district revamped and clarified and made sort of more useful to all constituents in the district. So I'll go into my first meeting with the chancellor, your lone report next week, where we have a series of monthly meetings set up, and I'll bring some notes about how to approach this problem of restructuring our shared governance structure. We have a long history of trying to reorganize, and I'm hopeful that this time around we'll get it right, and that we'll start building the kind of trust and working relationships that can produce fruit in the years to come. Next, I just want to let folks know that several faculty members from all of the colleges will be attending the Curriculum Institute in Riverside, California. I'll be attending in person. Many of our faculty members will be attending virtually, but I will be there in the heat that's projected to reach 104 degrees Sunday, so your thoughts and prayers are welcome. As you've heard time and time again, curriculum, of course, is number one on our 10 plus one, that is, the responsibilities outlined in Title V for faculty. And part of curriculum, of course, is modality. This becomes more and more important question for colleges as we shift into this new, hopefully, post-COVID era where we try to figure out how many classes to put online and how many classes to continue offering in person. So I hope to go to Riverside and get some clarity about how we can approach these issues of controlling modality while still recognizing management's right of assignment. So I'll come back and offer a full report in a couple of weeks at this meeting. Finally, I would like to offer some unsolicited advice or a suggestion to the board, and that is, in the year ahead, I think would be really useful for rebuilding the profile of the district to hold our regular board meetings at the city halls or the community centers of cities in our six service area cities. I also would recommend strongly that we consider holding our BOT meetings on the college campuses. I think it would be really useful for trustees to spend more time on the campuses, and I think it would be useful for us to practice getting out there in the communities and kind of rebuilding our image among the folks we serve. So I talked to Mark about this earlier today. This is not, I'm not blindsiding him here with this suggestion. I know this would be burdensome to him and his office and his staff, but I think it would be really important and really useful for us to get out into the six cities, go to the four colleges. It's a heavy lift for marketing and communications, I know, but we did this, I think, about 10 years ago, and it was very successful. And since we are entering this new era, again, I would advocate very strongly to trustees that they consider this possibility, however burdensome it may be for some of our offices. So thanks very much. I'll see you in a couple of weeks with a fulsome report from Toasty, Riverside, California. Thank you.
Thank you, President Goldstein. We will move to 3.11, public communications on matters that are not on the agenda.
We have one public comment in person, Justin Serry. Go ahead.
Hello. Hey, everybody. You know me, I'm Jeff. But this is the first time I'll be addressing you as PFD president, president of the Peralta Federation of Teachers. I'll start off by saying that I'm proud of our faculty and the work they're doing in our classrooms, libraries, and counseling and nursing offices. To be able to cope with the changes we've undergone, the things we've lost in the last three years are truly astounding, and I'm really happy to be counted among their numbers. I also want to say that as president, my approach to communication is probably going to be a little bit different than you might have experienced. I want to reinitiate, I hope to reinitiate board relationships and as well relationships with the administration as well. I like to think I'm easy to talk to. If you know me, you probably think so too. But I also think that, like, you know, going deeper, the giving a perspective that comes from our faculty might be useful to you all, and I've been watching for some time, and it seems that it's often our view, the view of the majority of Peralta employees that's missing from our discussion. In addition to offering you the perspective of people who know our students best, you know, our faculty and staff, I'll also be asking questions, and sometimes they're going to be hard questions, either about our budget, facilities, even our classrooms. And I don't think it's out of line to expect answers. You know, even an honest, like, you know, I don't know, but I'll look into it, kind of answer is fine, it's good when appropriate. Look, I won't lie, I've been frustrated over the past few years with the ways our administration and board have kind of ignored or and maybe in another way to say it is, like selectively, you know, recognize or interpreted the law for the past few years. I'm also frustrated, like a lot of faculty are, with the unfulfilled promises. Sorry. But I don't think that that should shut the door on, like, you know, serious and honest communication and civility. You know, whether it's administration or the board, I want to better understand why it is you do what you do. And I think it's possible for us to have, like, you know, these kinds of hard conversations where we can ask each other hard questions and expect real and coherent answers. I think we have a responsibility to our faculty, our staff, our colleges, and our district even, to be willing to, you know, have these kinds of discussions. Even with the basically, my issue is that even with the most sympathetic observers, some of the things that, like, we encounter and some of the things that we end up hearing lead us without explanations to draw some really wild and unfortunate conclusions. And I want us to be disabused of those kinds of conclusions, you know, the ones that includes conspiracies and so on and so forth. I, if there's something outside of that, dang it, I want to know, you know, I want to have those conversations. You know, listening to only one perspective and taking it as gospel is, I think, you know, everyone would agree problematic if not dangerous. You know, but everything I'll ever say to you or bring to you is going to be with evidence, and you won't ever have to distrust us. We'll always bring evidence to you. I hope you try to communicate with me soon. I look forward to hearing from all of you. Bye.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers on Zoom or in the boardroom? I think we only had one, right?
That is correctly, had one in person, and no one's hand. Does anybody on Zoom have a public comment they'd like to make? Raise your hand.
Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. We will now move to chancellor's reports. Chancellor Jackson? I don't know if she's here. Dr. Joker, did you want to step in and?
First, so we'll go ahead and start with Merritt College, Dr. David Johnson.
Okay, good evening, Deputy Chancellor, President Delphine Polk, trustees, colleagues, and community members. I hope and trust that everyone's doing well. In my written board report, you will note my formal welcome of Acting Vice President Instructor Lisa Cook, my account of the Merritt College Study abroad trip to Jamaica, which was led by Director of Student Activities and Campus Life, Doris Hankins and Dr. Siri Brown, but I'd like to congratulate, by the way, on her retirement. And you will find my acknowledgement of the tremendous job that may be here tonight, that Director of Public Safety, Tim Thomas, Administration of Justice Professor Mildred Oliver, and Marina Security did to keep our campus safe and sound during the Fourth of July holiday, which is always a challenge given the fireworks and the fire danger. But to that, I would like to add and speak briefly regarding the Merritt College Early Educator Apprenticeship Program, which we created to ensure equitable educational and economic opportunities for our students entering the workforce. We hope to enter into a grant agreement with the State Chancellor's Office's California Apprenticeship Initiative, and in fact, our proposal has been submitted for your consideration a little later on in tonight's agenda. But with that, I'm excited to share that the initial award for Merritt is nearly $1.5 million, and we intend to use those funds to recruit 108 students to become registered apprentices where they'll work toward earning the Merritt College Associate Teacher Certificate and a Child Development Associate Teacher's Permit. And we plan to partner with YMCA of East Bay and the City of Oakland Head Start Program to provide the students with the requisite on-the-job training to be competitive in their chosen fields. So this is really an exciting time for Merritt, and we look forward to your support on that. And with that, I will end tonight's report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Johnson, and I will move to Laney College and Dr. Vesikov. But I did want to make note and introduce Dr. Richardson, who is our acting, our interim president at Berkeley City College, taking over for Dr. Garcia, and then Dr. Maurice Jones is there, our Vice President of Instruction at College of Alameda, stepping in for Deanna Babrami, who is on a well-deserved vacation, President Delphine Polk. So we'll move to So we'll move to Laney College. Ready?
Thank you.
Good evening, Deputy Chancellor Droger, President Delphine Polk, members of the governing board, colleagues in education, and of course, our valued students and community members. In tonight's written report, you have a number of stories and details about some great things going on at Laney College. But I would like to step away from that and paint a picture for you of what's been a very busy Laney College campus this summer. First of all, bolstered by the completion of our educational master plan this spring, we are using the space of the summer to put final touches on our strategic enrollment management plan, one that we will be taking through our participatory governance processes from the word go in the fall semester. Around campus, I have to say things look great as deep cleaning work is nearing completion. And those at Laney who come to campus will be especially pleased to see the clean windows, especially in the tower now, desks, floors, and other areas, and just, just a really kind of a campus that shines right now as we look over our great city of Oakland. Additionally, I'd like to update the board that the critical work of air circulation maintenance, specifically the air compressors in welding is underway. And it's also moving forward in our areas that are in our building and skilled trades and other career and technical areas. And we are essentially looking at targeting the date of August 4th for finalization of that equipment installation. I know you heard about it during previous public comments, so I just wanted to highlight that. With the final steps anticipated to be completed afterward, and we're really looking forward to a a campus that's firing on a number of cylinders when we start, when we start the fall semester. I am very grateful to the work of our administrative services team, especially under the leadership of Dr. Dede Del Rosario, along with our colleagues in District General Services, as well as Mr. Michael Terry with HPLE and other partners who are working to ready our campus for a fall right now that is seeing, and I'm so happy about this, compared to a year ago, thirty-five percent more students in terms of enrollment. Finally, I'm pleased to share this evening an initiative that will be coming before you at our next regular meeting. And it is in the form of an exciting grant opportunity called the High Road to Construction Careers Proposal. It will deepen resources between Laney College and our labor union partners. And I know there was public comment about that as well at a previous meeting. Most notably, the Construction Trades Workforce Initiative, or CTWI, which is part of the Building Trades Council. The outcomes we are seeking, we are seeking with the grant is the increased participation of workers from target groups in high-demand occupations within the construction trades. Not only taking coursework into account with this work, but also credit for prior learning, this really that awesome new frontier, as well as CTWI's union-endorsed multi-craft core curriculum. And as you hear about this, one acronym you'll be hearing is MC3. The increased job demand is but one indicator of the need to bring Laney's focus on diversity, equity, inclusion, and access to the construction industry more. For this grant's work will create a comprehensive bridge that will bring more women, veterans, minorities, and formerly incarcerated graduates into the workforce. Laney, CTWI, and its partners will marshal all these resources along with this supplemental funding to wrap services around these students of tomorrow to ensure their acceleration through our programs, but also faster attainment of livable wage employment within the construction industry. This is truly an exciting opportunity. I think you can hear it in my voice a little bit that you as a board can look forward to. And with that, I'll conclude my report this evening.
Dr. Richardson.
Good evening, Deputy Chancellor Droger, Board President Diana Delphine Polk, trustees, colleagues, students, and members of the community. As I come to the end of my sixth day in this role, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the chancellor and the board of trustees for this immense opportunity. I received a very warm welcome at the college and I'm looking forward to working with the BCC team to build upon the great work that's already in progress. It is my pleasure this evening to share a bit about what's happening on our campus. We're excited to have three new additions to the BCC community, Zara Sanchez, our new HSI program coordinator, who joined us on July 3rd, Dean of Enrollment, Dr. Amy Lee, who began yesterday, and finally, Acting Dean of Liberal Arts and Social Sciences, Lilia Selahay, who started, who starts on July 25th. We are very pleased that these seasoned professionals have decided to come to BCC. And we are planning a celebration to officially welcome them to the community very soon. In alignment with our education master plan and our guiding priority to address generational poverty in our community, we are engaged in an intentional series of activities to support the well-being of our students in and beyond the classroom. In order to ease some of the challenges our students face with food, housing, and employment insecurity, we are continuing our food pantry on Thursdays from 12 to 2:30 during our summer session. And just yesterday, we began a donation drive in preparation for opening a clothing store in the fall. One of our most compelling opportunities for students has emerged from the exciting partnership that we recently developed with Represent Ed. They are a workforce development organization that connects underrepresented students with equity-minded professionals and businesses through the Level Up Program. This is a four-week intensive session designed to provide students with the skills and knowledge needed to successfully navigate high-demand professional careers. The forty students who are participating in the summer, the summer will be exposed to a broad range of industries, alumni panels and trainings. And after they complete the program, each student will leave with a professional portfolio that includes an updated resume, an elevator pitch, a LinkedIn profile, and a career development plan. We see this as a phenomenal opportunity for our students and an opportunity for us to set them up for success. In addition to the items found in our report, I'd like to share that our administrative services team has been working closely with the general contractor, Excel Construction. And the demolition of the 2118 Millvia Building has begun. The demolition process is scheduled to be completed in September 2023. This, of course, paves the way for the exciting next step, which will be the vertical construction of the brand-new BCC building. As we prepare for the fall semester, we are working to ensure a seamless enrollment process for our students. So to that end, beginning this week and for the month of July, BCC has enrollment workshops scheduled from Mondays and Tuesdays from 10 to 12 p.m. and Wednesday afternoons from two to four. There, students will receive support with enrollment applications, class registration and counseling, Canvas and Conex web services, and financial aid application support. Given the current climate in education, we at Berkeley City College are particularly proud and grateful to be part of an open-access college system that not only celebrates the rich diversity of our students, but that supports us and working diligently every day to prepare them to transfer, to succeed in attaining living wage careers, and to thrive in every space they choose to occupy. Thank you for your attention. This concludes my report for Berkeley City College.
Good evening, trustees, Chancellor Jackson, Deputy Chancellor Droger, colleagues, and members of the community. Maurice Jones, not doctor yet, but I am the interim Vice President of Instruction at College of Alameda. And I will present the president report on behalf of Dr. Barami. You have the president report, the written report in front of you, and I just wanted to add two additional highlights with regard to enrollment, student outreach enrollment, and community engagement. Just to inform you that on July 26, we're going to have a student outreach enrollment event at College of Alameda. This event is designed to provide academic counseling to students, financial aid advice and support in filling out the financial application and class enrollment assistance. We've had these events in the past and they've been very successful in bringing students to the college and helping them enroll. And so we're going to continue that good work. The other event I like to highlight is something that happened a week ago. Yeah, a week ago, July 4th. And this really, for me, because I participated in it, but it really represents broadening our community engagement, which, under the leadership of Dr. Barami, who over the past almost two years as Vice President of Instruction and as Acting President, has really been reaching to establish stronger connections with the community, the communities that we serve, in particular, the city of Alameda. And this was the City of Alameda's Fourth of July Parade, and which Dr. Barami and the executive leadership participated in, along with also Trustee Withrow, who was present. And that event was revealing, to say the least. It was just not a parade. It wasn't just a parade. It was quite, actually quite moving. Because along the parade route, we were in our particular College of Alameda car and had Alameda's logos on it. And as we started out the parade route, and the parade route went for several miles around, primarily the west end of Alameda. And there were like hundreds of people everywhere along the route. But as we started out, it was just really quite moving when people would salute Alameda, greet the college. But then they would tell their lives, they would come up to the car or they would shout out their life stories. Individuals, I got my masters because of COA. Or one individual came up, you know, I attended COA and I transferred. Another, I attended COA and my students attended COA, and now my grandchildren will be attending in the fall. And so as an educator, sometimes we don't always see the immediate impact that we have on people. But this event showed how, first of all, I put the community in community college because it was really a community event. But it also showed that we are not only having an impact on individuals, but we're having generational impact in the work that we do. And so again, I just wanted to highlight that event because it was really, it really validates the work that we do. Thank you. And that will conclude my report for the evening.
Thank you. Chancellor Jackson. So Jackson, yeah, I was just going to say that. Chancellor Jackson, do you have anything else to include in your report this evening?
No, I don't. I'm a bit under the weather, so I appreciate doing the Zoom, but the presidents have represented well. Thank you very much. And I encourage everyone to attend our board retreat that is coming up on the 26th of this month because we're going to be looking and working on our strategic plan and finalizing that. So I hope that people are available to attend that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Let's go ahead and move to our consent items. And that, again, as a reminder, we did pull 4.2. So may I hear a motion? Thank you.
Consent items, with the exception of those that have been pulled.
Thank you. Second? Second? Thank you. Discussion, roll call. Student trustee Massan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, he's absent. Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you. Let's, in numerical order, we'll go ahead and start with 4.2. And that is consider approval of out-of-state travel. There's a number of folks here on the agenda. Chancellor, did you want to speak to anything before? I'm sorry, let's go ahead and, I need a, I need a motion. So this is action items, yes. Thank you. Second?
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused.
We've moved to the action items. This is an action item since it was pulled, I think, by you.
The motion was to, is to approve 4.2?
We have to go to discussion.
Okay, thank you.
So I need a second so we can go to discussion and then you can get your questions answered.
Okay, second.
Thank you. Okay, discussion. Trustee Gonzalez Brito, you did pull this, so you want to go ask your questions first?
Yeah, I, I was, I am just a little bit concerned that this is something, the trip to China in particular, but all trips in general, but China being a $6,000 cost, I believe that this is something that, from my understanding, is already in the planning process, but perhaps should have been something that a new chancellor would be doing versus an outgoing chancellor, both for the relationship, for the continuity of the program, and just also, yeah, so, and I, and I worry about that kind of cost being spent on an outgoing chancellor for such an expensive trip. So that's, I understand that that relationship is important. International students are extremely important to the district. But it seems like we perhaps could have had a better way to plan this with an incoming chancellor versus an outgoing chancellor.
So I, I'd like to address that. And I also sent the board some information on this. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to read it. We have had a relationship, and I won't go into a huge historical, I provided that information to the board in writing, that started back before 2004, prior to Tomas coming into that role with Dr. Ying. And we've always had a strong relationship, but during the COVID years, that kind of panned off. We also had a change in administration at the national level that really didn't support international students coming to the country. So we started on another track on, with online instruction. This board passed in May at its board meeting, one million-dollar agreement with the, I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't feel very well, but the board passed a over one million-dollar revenue-generating agreement with the organization that we're visiting in China. And they are kicking off over thirty courses. And they invited us to attend because they want us to be there when the courses kick off in the fall. I did not ask to be invited. I did not advocate to be invited. And you're right, it would be appropriate for a new chancellor, but we do not see a new chancellor coming onboard until January 2024. And this is a time to build relationships. So Dr. Barami will be here past that time. She's the president at College of Alameda, which is sponsoring these thirty-plus classes. And currently, I am the sitting chancellor, so that was why the decision was made to move forward. It's a timing issue. It has nothing to do when I'm outgoing chancellor. This is not a junket that I'm going on to go and look at, you know, sites and sit around the pool and drink margaritas. This is really a business. And I also believe that that itinerary was provided to the board as part of this, so you can see the items and the travel that we will be doing. I also have the International Director, Tomas Gil, if you have any specific questions that you'd like to address to him.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito, do you have any additional questions?
So is, so what I'm understanding is that this is something that our colleagues in China planned, asked us to attend. And then, and, and, and that's why the attendance has to happen at this time versus when a new chancellor comes in?
No, we're having courses that are kicking off. We have thirty online courses. I believe it was thirty-two or thirty-three courses that are kicking off in the fall. That's why the event is to celebrate and to meet with us to establish a more ongoing, longstanding relationship for more courses. And these courses by themselves are bringing in $1 million. So when you compare $6,000 to a revenue of $1 million, less than 20% or 25%, I think that investment is well worth it. It's not using general fund dollars. It's using fund $30, which is what is established. But that, that was rational. They don't know that we have a new chancellor coming or that we're in the process of, they're looking at establishing relationships with the institution, whoever happens to be sitting in the seat.
Right. Well, I guess that's my concern because they don't know that we're going to have a new chancellor and they're inviting an outgoing chancellor.
I don't know that they know that. Why don't you let Tomas answer any questions you have, since he's been coordinating with them? And I was invited to attend. I didn't advocate, as I said. Can you bring him in as a panelist, Sasha?
I'm here, Dr. Jackson.
He's here, Chancellor.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to address that. Our office invited the chancellor and the president. ASAA is the company and they started their Contract Education Course Program last fall, 2022. Previous to that, we've been working with other institutions outside of the US who were seeking a way for their students to continue to were seeking a way for their students to continue to take classes, uh, during the COVID, uh, you know, pandemic and were unable to come to the United States. And these opportunities really created additional teaching opportunities for our faculty, uh, additional opportunities for our students, uh, who wanted to come to us physically but unable to do so for them to continue or to start their education. And the entire time, we've been working with a variety of companies. They, they've wanted us to physically go and meet the students, meet their program coordinators and leaders and the universities that they're affiliated with as well. Uh, our office invited the chancellor and the president, uh, and I, in my, in my view, I think the chancellor's inputs and expertise is very valuable to whichever chancellor we may have coming in, um, you know, later on this year. And so even if the chancellor may not be here past December, she will have firsthand experience of this program, can either vouch for it or, or even say, maybe this isn't something we want to pursue uh, moving forward as well. So I, I would recommend that, um, in this instance, we really consider the, the bigger picture. This is a program we've developed. This, uh, ASAA had four cohorts, uh, last fall and spring. And this, this fall, they will expand an additional four cohorts to make it a total of seven. So they started with three, added one in the spring and adding four more this fall. And the number of courses we're offering through ASAA over this next academic year exceeds the total number of courses that were offered from fall twenty, uh, twenty through spring twenty twenty-three. And so this is a really big program. There could be about three hundred students. And it is a wonderful opportunity to, to visibly see how the program is run, meet everyone as well as, uh, meet the students on their first week of school. It's going to be in two different cities. So we're going to have uh, one visit in Beijing, or that's the plan, is to visit Beijing for the first two days to meet with the students that are physically there at the University of International Business and Economic School, as well as meet the campus leaders and attend a workshop the following day. That, we then will be flying to another city where the other cohorts cohorts are at Zhejiang University in Hangzhou. And we'll be there for another couple of days, flying back and then returning, uh, back stateside. So this is a very, it, it may not seem like it a week long, but to, to go internationally and visit two cities and seven cohorts for this larger program, it's, it's a really unique opportunity. Um, and again, over the course of this year, this will generate about fifty-eight teaching opportunities. And all of the revenue from this contract is paid by ASAA. And that is what is funding uh, this travel. And this number of about, let's just say, between the three of us, close to twenty to twenty-five thousand, that is about two and a half percent of the total contract value.
Thank you, Tomas. Trustee Reese?
Thank you, uh, Tomas. And thank you Chancellor Jackson, actually, for representing us for going on this particular trip. It takes a lot to go to Asia and the fact that you are doing this is really quite wonderful because we don't have a chancellor at the moment and the fact that you are present there with the College of Alameda president and with Tom, Tomas is really quite fantastic. This board approved in May this million dollar contract. Um, and so I appreciate the explanation and I appreciate that you are going on this particular trip. Um, and again, this board approved this particular contract for one million forty-seven, uh, a million forty-seven thousand dollars for the ASAA education agreement. Thank you.
With just your race. Any additional questions before we move to a vote?
Uh, I would just say, I don't think that there's a question that building the relationships and, um, supporting this program that we voted for. That's not the question. It's just a matter of timing and whether this should have been planned for the beginning of the year. Um, so that we can have our new chancellor go and build these really important relationships and then be able to continue them going forward.
May I interject?
Please go ahead.
That timing would be ideal. It didn't happen. Uh, we have a chancellor here who has a long history with this particular district. And as opposed to having a new chancellor who doesn't have a history with this district, again, it is happening at this particular moment. And the fact that she is going and the fact that she has this experience is good and great. If next year this happens again with a new chancellor, if that's what they would like to do, then that's what will happen. But at this moment in time, with our current chancellor, at this time, it is what we have. And she is there. She's present with the president and with Tomas. And she is building and cultivating a relationship. And she's got a long history with this particular district as well as a long history with the California Community College system.
Thank you. Any additional questions from other trustees? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move to a vote.
Oh, we already have a person.
Yeah, we have a person and a second. We just need a, a roll call vote now.
Thank you, Tracy Withrow.
But thank you. Student trustee Masson?
Yes.
Tracy Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
No.
So we have a problem because you seconded the motion.
I know. I thought I was seconding the discussion. It's not, not the, not the motion. So I misunderstood.
For discussion, okay.
Does, is it, is that true, Nikki? Can she actually second for the discussion?
We don't have Nikki with us.
Oh. Uh, Natasha, in terms of the
Can we just redo the motion?
We would have to create a new, we would have to rescind this motion and create a new motion. Yes, let's go ahead and do that then. Okay. Motion to approve four point two. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
I'm waiting for, Louis has a question. So let me second it. Let me second it and then whatever.
Don't we have to deal with the other motion first?
We rescinded it.
We did? We didn't take a vote to do it?
Do we have to vote to rescind it? This is where having a parliamentarian actually would be really helpful.
Where is Nikki?
I know.
Where is Natasha?
I, I don't think you can.
I believe you're correct.
Vote and then not.
We can vote to rescind it and then create a new motion. Okay, let's go ahead and, yeah, let's go ahead and proceed with that.
Madam President.
Yes.
Uh, under Roberts' rules, the major of a motion must approve the, uh, vote, but the second is for a discussion only.
That's what my understanding was. So, um, let's go back Sasha really quickly because you said there was a problem with trustee Gonzalez Brito. Well, because the motion was to approve the out of state travel. And trustee Napoleon Bellaries was the first. And trustee Brito was the second to approve it as a yes. Correct. I don't think that's correct. Actually, I think that it was for discussion.
That's right.
Yeah.
The agenda.
Right. Okay, so we can proceed, we can proceed with the vote, I believe. Okay, so then I'll just, okay. If anyone else, please feel free to correct his. So we won't rescind anything. We're just gonna go back to the original vote. We'll go back to the original vote. We'll record trustee Gonzalez Brito as a no. Yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna go through the votes just in case one more time. Student trustee Masson?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
No.
Trustee Quinlan?
No.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Three to two, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to eight point one. Consider adoption of resolution twenty-three slash twenty-four dash ninety-nine for district bank signers. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, second by VP Quinlan. Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and move to vote. My apologies. Who was the first motion? Trustee Withrow?
Thank you.
Yes.
And Quinlan was the second. Correct. Thank you, ma'am. Student trustee Masson?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along to eight point two. Consider adoption of resolution number twenty-three slash twenty-four dash one hundred, authorizing submission of the annual facilities five-year capital outlay construction plan for fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-nine for submission to the state chancellor's office before August first. May I have a motion? Thank you. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Reese. Discussion. And if you can help me in the room, that would be helpful. Thank you so much.
We have a few questions in here.
Okay.
So, um, yes, I have a question with the, um, let's see, what's the number of the five-year student housing, uh, plan. In that plan, it shows in the year twenty twenty-three, we are gonna spend two point seven six million dollars on this project. Which is before we get approval for it in, um, July first of twenty twenty-four. So I don't understand why we're spending money on a proposal. We don't even know if it's gonna be approved. And the second question is, where's that money coming from?
I believe we have Ivy C. Smith with us.
I hear, I am here and good evening, uh, trustee Delphine Pope and good evening trustees and colleagues. Um, no, we are not spending any funds until it is passed. Now, that item is required to be listed in our five-year plan just as a listing. So we have to wait until the approval of the state uh, chancellor's office on who's awarded. It's just a requirement to be listed in the five-year plan, but there's no indication and we do not plan to do any expenditures until, one, we know it is approved by the state chancellor, we receive the grant. And two, until we have authorization and the plan from the board to move forward on such a plan. So, um, I also have, uh, Bobby Kachal, if you have any additional questions from Almost Strategies. But no, we have no, um, uh, uh, plans to move forward until approved by the board.
Louis?
Um, so I don't understand why two million, seven hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred dollars is under Phase W twenty-three, twenty-four spending by the district.
That, that, that's listed there because of the way that the five-year construction plan has listed all of the projects. It requires, you know, we, when we have the, uh, the, the, what we call the J-CAP thirty-two form or the cost estimate for the housing project, it breaks the total project cost up into phases. And you have preliminary plans, you have working drawings, you have construction and, and you have equipment. And those are the phases of each of the project, um, pieces and they are allocated by fiscal year. And so what the five-year construction plan does is take the project estimated budget and breaks down the cost by phase and attaches it to a fiscal year. And so it's not a, um, commitment of spending funds. It's more of a cost estimate budget of how much would be, um, budgeted for that phase in a fiscal year. I hope that, that answers it.
Well, so if we're not gonna spend any money, why can't we just move that category back to twenty-four, twenty-five, Phase C to twenty-five, twenty-six and Phase E to twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Trustee, um, Quinlan, if we are notified in June, we will be in twenty-three.
July first is the notification date.
No, no, June. Remember, we're gonna be notified by the state if we have been awarded any funds. And that's why we have to include it in twenty-three, twenty-four. Because June twenty-four is before July twenty-four. And so that's why we have to do that.
I'm aware of the calendar, but if I remember correctly and what we read last week, um, the bill said, the bill that funded this said the notification would be on July first, twenty twenty-four.
No later than. I haven't. This is not a, let me just, one more. This is a plan. This is not a budget. This is a plan. And plans are subject to change. If the board chooses whether we're awarded it or not, the board can say, we are not accepting your fifty-three million dollars. We will do it by ourselves. But that's a big if. This is a plan, if indeed it does go through, to comply with what is required under the statute.
Thank you, Chancellor. I wanted to, that was a, actually the clarifying question I was going to ask it. This, we're not committing any funds at this time, correct? This is just a plan. And i- in the event that we have to change plans, say that we don't, just for sake of discussion, we don't get the funding. We would amend this plan. What would that process be?
When we go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead. No, go ahead. I was just gonna say, the five-year construction plan is updated every year annually and submitted to the state chancellor's office at around this time each year. And so we start that process at about, in about January, March, and it runs through June.
So the plan would be amended and then it would come to the board again for approval minus that item.
Okay. And again, just, once again, we are not committing any funds at this time with this particular plan. Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you. Are there any other questions in the boardroom?
I have a question. Thank you for getting the missing information to us, um, because that missing information was indeed important to be able to actually look at this comprehensively. The question that I have though is initially the housing plan wasn't on here. Um, and it's also not on the list above. So all of the different project names have points associated with it. But neither the housing plan nor pointage um, is delineated in the table above. So if somebody could just answer that question for me, that would be good. And thank you, Deanna, for clarifying that this is a priority list for a plan to submit to the chancellor's office, but it does not necessarily tie us down to or commit us to actually going forward with the projects and/or the expense of money.
Thank you, uh, trustee Reese. Um, I will say that our application has not, it's currently admitted and it has not been ranked. Um, we will understand where we ranked and the correct assessed points that were going to be assigned from the state chancellor's office. But I will also defer to Bobby to fur, to further, um, provide you with more information on the process.
Yeah, so the biggest difference here is that for your IPPs, your initial project proposals and your FPPs, your final project proposals, those are capital in projects that we've done for years and the state's done for years. And so Infusion, which is the database and the system that we input all of this, these plans into, they have it set up so we can have a live look at our scoring for those IPPs and our FPPs. So we're able to know exactly what we're scoring on a, all, all initial project proposals and final project proposals. Because the student housing is such a new thing and was just barely added into Fusion before we submitted this round of applications. The system does not have a calculation to give us live scoring, um, at this time. And so currently, the chancellor's office is providing that scoring separate from Fusion. So nobody that submitted, um, student housing actually knows exactly where they landed in scoring at this time. So that's the difference between student housing versus your IPPs and your FPPs.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Any additional questions from the boardroom?
Just, yes.
I see Louis's hand up from far away, so, go ahead, VP Quinlan.
Um, and I guess this is a, uh, you know, a question that, for the future date, that, you know, it, it, um, but I'm just curious where that two point seven six million dollars, where we're planning to get that from.
You want to flip to that, IVC Smith?
Um, we, you know, it's, a part of that will have to come from, um, either going out for bond. We had talked about what's required in terms of the funds that are gonna be needed for this project, and we had talked about last board meeting that we are going to either have to have private partnerships or, um, some of her, some other fundraisers, or we're going to have to go out for a bond, but it is not from general fund, nor can it be from our, um, bond.
Our current bond.
Current bond, thank you. It cannot be part of our current bond, because it is not listed in our current bond. Thank you, trustee Pope.
Of course. Any other questions, folks?
I have a question, um, so when that process begin for, we're not waiting until July first to start the process for trying to raise that money, correct?
So I wanna, yes, I wanna, I don't wanna stray too, too far away from our item, so if you wanna quickly answer that, please, go ahead. Um, I believe it goes to IVC Smith. Can you repeat the question, just again?
Yeah, the question, please?
Uh, we're not waiting until July first, um, to start, till we find out whether we got the, um, the grant or not to start fundraising for the amount that we're responsible for, right?
This is getting a little bit away from the item, I, I apologize, IVC Smith, this is getting a little bit away from the item. This is, once again, a plan, this is not committing funds, and, um, I know we've discussed the house, student housing issue at our last meeting at length. So I, I, I don't wanna stray too, I don't wanna stray away from the item. So we can continue to have that discussion if and when that comes back to the board.
And just one, one other thing to try to address your question, um, trustee Brito, is we have a retreat coming up, I mentioned that in my chancellor's report. That is where the board gets together and determines what the priorities are for the next year. They provide guidance to the administration, we look at our priorities, and if at that time, the board feels that they wanna move forward with this, then we will start preparation for housing. Uh, in previous meetings during that retreat, the board indicated to us that they were interested in housing. If that has changed now, because we've had different board members come on to the seat, then we will pivot and not pursue that. But if we are to pursue it, if that still is a priority for this board, then what we will do is we will start making plans, because we have two other campuses that have land that are not impacted by buildings right next door to them, and that is Laney College, and that's Merritt College. And as we indicated when we made the first presentation by votes, which I believe was before you were seated in January, we indicated that there were funds that were still remaining that we were going to use for feasibility studies at the other colleges. So if we don't get this grant from the state, and again, it is a competitive grant, we are not guaranteed to get it. If in this month at your retreat, that is no longer a priority for us, then we will no longer pursue it. It's up to the board to make that decision.
Yep, thank you, Chancellor. We will be discussing more of this at our board retreats, so I encourage everyone to participate and watch, um. And so, um, yes, we will. We have no other questions on this particular item, I do wanna keep emphasizing that this is not a budget item, this is a plan that can change later. And we're not committing the funds at this time. Are there any other questions in the room?
No, there is not.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and move to a vote. Student Tracy Massand?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarise?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving to our last action item, eight point three, consider the final reading and grant emeritus status to retired faculty, classified staff, confidential staff, administrators, and trustees pursuant to Board Policy seventy-eight hundred. I'll second that. Any discussion before we move to a vote? Go ahead, VP Quinlan, I can see your hand.
Um, yes, uh, thank you. Um, so I, I've talked to several people that, uh, were aware of this, and they meet the requirements, but they're not on this list, and they've asked me to request how they address that.
Chancellor? So I believe this list went through the shared governance process, didn't it?
Yes, it did, and I, I will ask, uh, Dr. McKinley to address the process, um, because that was handled under HR, and it also had a, a committee that looked at the names that were presented to them, and they were the ones that are making this recommendation. But Dr. McKinley, if you wanna go through what your office did to prep for that, um, to try to address, um, um, trustee Quinlan's, and if they feel that they were eligible, what is the recourse that they have?
Right, uh, uh, thank you, good evening, everyone. Yes, uh, we, the, the committee met, uh, a couple of times, and the, uh, HR produced the ri- the list based on the criteria, uh, that are required to be eligible, and if we missed anyone, then please have them submit their names to me, and we will, uh, bring that back to the committee for their consideration.
I, I might just, uh, point out that, um, this district, the reason that the list is, uh, a bit foreboding in the number of individuals that are listed, is we have not done an emeritus following our board policy in a number of years. This is the first time that we've done that, so, um, kudos to the HR office, uh, for moving forward with this, this is one of the goals that we said we would do this, this year, um, and they have accomplished that, and we will be, once the board approves this, assuming that they will, um, we are already looking at planning a celebration, um, in the early fall, um, to bring in those individuals that can make it for face-to-face, uh, presentation, and if they cannot make it, then we will provide a, a certificate or, or some appropriate, uh, designation for, for those that have been waiting a number of years, uh, for this, um, emeritus status. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on this, before we move to a vote? Okay, seeing none, let's proceed. Student Tracy Massand?
I'm sorry, um.
Go ahead.
President Deanna, I don't think that we're voting on this, because this is the first reading, and the second.
This is the final reading. This is the final reading.
Oh, my, okay, sorry.
No worries. Student Tracy Massand?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarise?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Um, I've been advised by council since I'm on this list, I need to abstain.
Congratulations, VP Quinlan. Trustee Delphine Pope? Yes, and congratulations again. Motion passes. Fantastic. Okay, let's go ahead and move to Board of Trustees' reports. Um, do we have any reports, if you, I can see your guys, hold, if you hold your hand up, so if you have a report, please hold your hand up. All right, seeing none.
Everybody has their report.
Okay, the only thing I will say, um, I am in New York City for the National Association of Latino Elected Officials. Um, today was our first full day of workshops, it's been absolutely phenomenal to be around other, uh, Latino elected officials, Latinx elected officials, and, um, the track for community college trustees and school board members for budgeting is tomorrow afternoon, so I'm really looking forward to that. So I'm happy to report back, uh, next time I see y'all.
I just have one.
Go ahead, VP Quinlan.
So, uh, earlier when I joined the board, I, I, uh, made the statement that I was available for use or abuse, or whatever you needed me for. Dr. Johnson took me up on that, uh, for their fall enrollment, and I wanna make sure the other presidents know that, uh, I am retired, so I only have to do what I wanna do. And, uh, one of the things I wanna do is work hard to promote the success of our college and the success of our students. So if you can use me at any point for anything, uh, including cleaning up a campus, please let me know.
Thank you, VP Quinlan. Um, seeing no one else's hand up, let's go ahead and go to announcements. Back to you, VP Quinlan.
I know, I'm trying to find you.
VP Quinlan, I don't know if your mic is on, because we can't hear you.
Bing is taking over my computer somehow. Um, let's see, okay. Okay, I got announcements, no, that's agenda review. Um, did you send me something, uh, Sasha? Announcements, there is.
I did, I will send it to you again.
Yeah, I did, okay, uh, thank you. Uh, my apologies for my hesitation. July eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, enrollment is now open for the fall twenty-twenty-three semester, and fall is free at the Peralta Colleges. Please visit www.peralta.edu to start the enrollment process. Two, enrollment events are happening at each of the colleges, including Berkeley City College Enrollment Workshops from July tenth through the twenty-sixth at various times. Colleges, College of Alameda, Seaco- Coachella, on Wednesday, July twenty-sixth, from ten to two PM. Laney College One Stop Saturday Enrollment Support Events on August twelfth and nineteenth. Merritt College Financial Aid Workshops every Tuesday and Wednesday from noon to one PM. Please visit the college websites for time and location details. And number three, the Bond Oversight Committee will meet in person here in the boardroom tomorrow, July twelfth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty PM. The meeting is also available, uh, via Zoom, visit www.peralta.edu for details. That's it.
Okay, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Bye, everybody.